The Monday, October 13 meeting of the Common Council and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
Alderperson yours.
Here.
And Alderperson Doyle is absent and excused this evening.
We have a forum, thank you for that, and we will proceed with the meeting. Next, we have public count. Does anyone in the public wish to speak this evening on any issue that is not on the agenda? Anyone in the public who wishes to speak this evening? Anyone in the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Including your fact for the minutes of the center of the second meeting of the County Council, what is your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Yers.
There's second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Under Mayor's business this evening, I have a few items. We do have a very young man, future leader, in our audience this evening, and I'm going to read a proclamation from the city of Verona. This is a proclamation for Eagle Scout designation for Ian D. Birschbach. Whereas scouting is a nationally recognized program designed to promote the positive development of our youth, and whereas through his participation in scouting, Boy Scouts of America member Ian D. Birschbach, representing Troop 349 in Verona, Wisconsin, has acquired a broad range of knowledge and skill in areas such as camping and outdoor living, first aid and safety, citizenship in the community, the nation, and the world, environmental science, and personal management; and whereas, in addition to earning numerous merit badges, he has served in various troop leadership positions, including serving as a troop senior patrol leader for the past two years. And whereas Ian is often involved with community events that support those less fortunate in our community, Ian's service project was coordinating, designing, and building a storage building for Good Shepherd Lutheran Church for the purpose of storing clothing for their closets, or excuse me, clothes closet ministry. And whereas Ian has put into daily practice the principles of the scout oath and scout law, and has accepted the lifelong obligations of his rank that include helping others and being a good citizen. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Common Council of the city of Verona hereby recognizes and congratulates Ian D. Birschbach on achieving the designation of Eagle Scout as a member of Boy Scouts of America Troop 349 in Verona, Wisconsin, and this is signed and dated on October 4th of 2014. The actual ceremony has taken place, it was about a week ago, but Ian is with us this evening. Ian, if you would stand, and we'd like to acknowledge you. We certainly thank you for all the work, all the effort that you've had to get you to the point that you could earn this designation, and we're all looking forward to seeing great things in the future. So congratulations again. And if someone wanted to give that. I do have another proclamation. And this is regarding the City of Verona proclamation for Halloween trick-or-treat hours. In the interest of promoting Halloween safety for the Verona area children, I, John Hokumar, Mayor of the city of Verona, hereby proclaim the official hours of trick-or-treating in the city of Verona to be between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Friday, October 31st, 2014. And that is signed and dated this day, October 13th of 2014. So perhaps the Verona Press will have something in the Verona Press as well, and those are the hours for the trick-or-treating this year. We are honored here this evening for the next item to have some individuals that want to talk to us about the Verona Road business community and what occurs during the construction. This is a multi-year building process. There was a meeting last week where a lot of people were there, business, elected officials, and others, to hear from them, and they are here tonight to do a brief presentation to us. I see that Adam is, looks like attempting to get the presentation on, they're almost there, on the PowerPoint, but we will have, I will introduce Cindy, and Cindy can introduce our other guests this evening, and then we'll go from there. And we're very pleased to have you here this evening. So Cindy, Cindy Yagi, whenever you are ready.
Well, we're still trying to load this, but. Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much for the invitation.
Cindy, can you use the mic at the podium, just so that everyone can?
Okay, all right. Okay. I don't know, we're having some technical difficulties here, but anyway, first of all, thank you very much for the invitation to come in and talk about the Verona Road Business Coalition tonight. With me here today is Deirdre Garten, Deirdre, and Tony Prestajacamo. Deirdre is the owner of Quivvies Grove, and Tony is an attorney with Foley &amp; Lardner, and also a property owner in the Verona Road corridor as well. So we wanted to come and talk to you today about who the Verona Road Business Coalition is, what our mission and goals are, and the impact to the whole entire Verona Road corridor, and why we're asking for participation and involvement by the city of Verona. So first, I'm going to turn it over to Deirdre, who's going to take us through how the Coalition got started, as she was one of the founding members.
Thanks for asking us to come and chat with you tonight. My name's Deirdre Garten, I'm one of the owners at Quivvies Grove, and as many of you probably know, we've been in business for about 33 years. So we've been through construction projects before along the Verona Road corridor. We actually started off when it was a two-lane road, not a highway the way it is today. So we've been able, as a business, to adapt to the changes, and as many other businesses have along the corridor. But this Verona Road construction really offers a different set of challenges from any of the construction projects that have happened before along Verona Road. And the two main challenges really are the length of time that it's going to be under construction. Of course, we all know it started this year with all of the construction at north at the Belt Line. And while we, I think there were several businesses that didn't expect that there would be an impact just in that, even though in the sort of second stage, which is around PD, which is where Quivvies is, people started feeling the impact, even though the construction hadn't actually come down that far. So that really rang, you know, a bell for a lot of us, that we needed to get out in front of this problem, and we really needed to organize and be on top of things. And so we have pulled together really a wonderful group of people, businesses primarily in the Fitchburg portion of it, but that are organizing and working to develop information sources for businesses. We are planning to do a survey of our businesses to find out what they need now, what they think they're going to need in a year or two, and what they are going to need long-term. And out of that, we hope to develop a whole marketing effort during this full period. We have developed a committee structure. We're lucky to have lots of volunteers already. And so the fact that this is five years of construction, but the other piece of this that is challenging is that it is, it's a regional effort. It is, it's Madison, it's Fitchburg, and it's Verona. I mean, this, one of the challenges for us, I think, as a business, unlike some of the other road construction projects, Manona Drive, or Willie Street downtown in Madison, or Wanakee this summer, is that those efforts really relied on their neighborhoods, Manona, Wanakee, to support them. And they, and some of them, some of them did a better job than others. Manona did an excellent job. I think Wanakee has struggled a little bit. Willie Street did quite well, I think. The identity of this Verona Road corridor isn't quite as clear, and so that's another challenge that we have to face. And so we're, we feel as though we need to reach out beyond just sort of the area right around our businesses in the Fitchburg neighborhood, and instead to reach out both to Madison as well as to, as to Verona, to work together, to plan, and to think about how we can actually help the businesses that are being impacted, and think about what does this actually mean long-term for everybody. So I think Tony is going to talk to you a little bit about exactly what's involved so far, and how we're structured, so that, and then Cindy's going to say a thing or two as well about some more information for you. And then we're open to questions, of course.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Tony Prestajacamo. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. So to date, who's involved? We've been very fortunate to have the support and guidance of the city of Fitchburg. They've been instrumental in helping us get involved and sort of have led us in the right direction and pointed us to resources that we might not have otherwise been aware of. So the city has been very instrumental in giving us the support to get us off the ground. We've been in touch with the cities of Madison, we're here tonight. We have the support of the Fitchburg Chamber of Commerce. Earlier this week, we met with the executive director of the Verona Chamber of Commerce, and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation has been obviously very involved in our efforts, has put on several informational meetings for the businesses and the members of the community throughout the process. They attended our rally last week, where the mayor was in attendance, and also Evan Touche, thank you Evan, and they even have a simulator, so that, for those of you who haven't seen this, they have actually sim, video, or, is that what it would be, a video? I don't know, it's on their computer, of what Verona Road will look like after the construction. And it starts up at Raymond Road and will take you all the way south, almost into Verona. So the good news is, is that when the road's done, the city of Verona really will benefit from that much improved road. But in the meantime, we have a lot of work to do to get through the next five years of construction. Also, obviously, we've had the support of public officials. The mayor of Fitchburg, Mayor Hokumar was at our rally last week, so, and we've had support from our representatives, our local representatives, and the entire Fitchburg City Council. So we've been very blessed to have all of this support, and it's been a great way to get us off the ground. We are looking for volunteers, anyone who's interested in helping us to succeed. We're open to getting members of the Fitchburg business community, getting members of just the neighborhood associations, getting members from the Verona business community involved. The more, the merrier, as they say, and we hope that in the process, we're going to establish a true community along the Verona Road corridor. And as we keep talking about the Verona Road corridor, I think I'd also like to say that the impact of the project will not only be along the corridor, but there will be areas to the west, I believe, that will be affected, most notably that Williamsburg Way area. Williamsburg Way, as you're coming south on Verona Road, will look very different from what it does today. It will be an overpass over the new highway or freeway. There'll be roundabouts at Verona Road. The areas along PD that some of you may travel to shop at Target or the new Hy-Vee will be very different also. There'll be a connector road feeding through the neighborhood that will ultimately connect down Anton Drive through Williamsburg Way to help the members of the community during construction and after construction have other ways to get into the city of Madison besides getting on the highway. So we're looking for people from Madison, Verona, and Fitchburg to be involved, because, as Deirdre said, it's a regional project, and it will impact not only the Fitchburg businesses, but we think also your businesses. And I think that Cindy will speak more to that when she has her opportunity to speak. So we're designed to hopefully bring the business community together, strengthen the community, help them develop a sense of community, and help them to thrive during this five-year construction period. What does that mean? We think that in a case like this, where you have such an extended construction period, it's very important to get the word out early, like we're doing now, but help them to promote their businesses, encourage members of your community, members of the Fitchburg community, and the Madison people. Don't, as you take these detours and you think about avoiding Verona Road, think twice about supporting your businesses, because they're important to the overall community. We'll try to run promotions to attract customers to these affected businesses, and our goal will be that this will be something not only during construction, but on a post-construction basis, that our efforts will be something that hopefully the business community and members of the community at large will carry on long after the construction is completed. We hope to have a business community along that Verona Road corridor, similar to the very nice business community you folks enjoy here in Verona. I have a Fitchburg resident, my son has played Little League football here, and we love coming to Verona and having dinner at Culvers, or coming to Avante, and we also shop at Miller's Market. So I say that because when the road is under construction, it won't be as easy to do these things, to get to Miller's Market or to get to the Culvers, and we hope our efforts and promotions will encourage people to come and frequent your businesses and our businesses during the period. So that's what we're all about. We're hoping to be proactive, and we are looking for your support in any way, including just encouraging your chamber to get involved, thinking about ways that you can help us. We are open to suggestions. It doesn't need to be financial support. We're organized, we've spent a lot of time getting organized, we have a committee structure. Deirdre and I are the co-chairs. Don't ask us how, we got those wonderful titles. There are days when we wonder, but we are the co-chairs. We have hired Cindy Yagi to be our project manager. Cindy has her company Economic Development Partners, as I'm sure many of you know, is based here in Verona. And we have an executive committee and four main committees. One of them is a Verona Road Merchants Committee, and we hope that that committee will develop the promotions, develop communication among the merchants. So that's our first committee, in addition to our executive committee. We have a logistics committee that will work very closely with the DOT to keep all of us, the businesses, the residents, informed of what's happening with the road construction, where the detours are, what's going on this week, what roads will be closed, what roads will be opened, that kind of thing. We also hope, since we're starting early, that this logistics committee will be able to work with the DOT as they start letting contracts, and we'll be able to get the businesses involved before they sign contracts, to let contractors know, this business needs access from this road, you can't shut them off completely. So we're hoping to do that in an effort to help the businesses before the construction starts. And we have also a marketing committee. We're in the process of setting up a website, and Cindy will have to, what is our website address?
VeronaRoad.info.
So we're building a website. We'll have a social media effort, beyond my expertise, but we'll be on Twitter and doing all of those things. And we have a public relations committee. We just, today, one of our volunteers wrote an awesome press release about our kickoff rally last week, and we hope to see it placed in publications like the Fitchburg Star, maybe even your Verona Press. So we're doing things like that. And finally, we're organized by, we have nine blocks that we've come up with that are in the immediate vicinity of the construction, and we've designated block captains, which are business owners or business managers, and they will form the backbone of our efforts. They'll communicate among their blocks, let everyone know what's going on. We hope that they'll do their own promotions, they'll do their own communications, and just keep everyone involved. So that's what we're all about. I think we've done a lot in the past six months, and we just, we're very confident that this will be a good project. Most important, we're all trying to stay positive, because it is overwhelming at times, and when you listen to the DOT and you hear that Williamsburg Way is going to be closed for three months, that doesn't go over very well with your businesses. So trying to stay positive, and the mayor of Manona told us they survive by having fun. So in the midst of all of this, we hope our promotions will have fun, and people will get involved and support us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Well, you might be asking, you know, why should Verona get involved? In essence, you know, it's, the construction is starting up in Madison, it's going to be progressing down to Fitchburg, and then eventually to Verona. But as you heard us talking about the fact that this is, this is really a regional impact project and things, it's the largest and longest road construction project in the state of Wisconsin. It's virtually unprecedented, it's never, you know, we've never had anything like this. So truly, we're all in this together, and we're all learning together, too. So there's a lot of things that we're going to be, you know, gaining feedback from the businesses affected, and then be proactively working on those issues and concerns that they're most interested in having addressed. The regional impact of the Verona Road project is 167-plus million in assessed value of the businesses in the corridor. So that's a huge impact, and it affects all of the employers, the employees, you know, the residents, you know, visitors to the area. It's truly a huge impact, and that's why we're asking for your involvement here in Verona. This is phase one of a five-year project, as you've heard, and we think it's really, really important that we're all getting involved proactively. We're getting involved early so that we can have impact on, you know, decisions being made, you know, by the DOT, and detours that they're putting up, and signage that's being put up, to effectively communicate that our businesses are still open, that they're still open for business, and to, you know, to again encourage customers and visitors to keep up with their loyalty and with their shopping patterns. But in essence, in the, in the end, Verona businesses will be impacted by some retail and commercial leakage at the detour points, and so that's why we're working really hard to try to proactively, again, try to put out promotions and marketing and communications to get people still coming, even if they have to come through alternate routes and things to get to the businesses and, and to, you know, the shopping and things like that, so. I think the main thing here is, again, we're all in this together, so we are reaching out to Madison, you heard the involvement of Fitchburg. I think that at our kickoff rally, where John and Evan did attend, I think the overwhelming sentiment was the fact that there were a lot of businesses there who were looking at the simulation and going, oh my goodness, I had no idea of the impact that this is going to have on my business. And a good example of that is Lucas Glasgow, who is the manager of Hy-Vee, and he had never seen that simulation before, and he had no idea, as he was managing this new Hy-Vee store, what that impact was going to look like for him. So now, they are a very large sponsor of the Verona Road Business Coalition, they're going to be working with us on marketing and promotions to again get, you know, those consumer patterns coming into shop in that area. But let's talk a little bit about how the Verona Road Business Coalition is going to help businesses. Again, we're here to help all businesses, Madison businesses, Fitchburg businesses, and Verona businesses that are located in the corridor. And so as part of our mission, we're going to be hosting or holding regular DOT updates and sharing that information on a timely basis, sharing alternate routes. All this information will be available on the new Verona Road Business Coalition website, which is located at VeronaRoad.info, and we can get that information out to you. The landing page is already up, and the website will be live probably by the end of the month here. In addition to that, we will be involved in neighborhood strategic planning in the various different neighborhoods along the corridor as well, and some of our action plans will be involved in the development plans that are being planned for the corridor as well. We'll be proactively marketing and promoting the businesses within the corridor, and doing that through, again, the websites, social media, Facebook, Twitter. Literally, again, we want to make the Verona Road Business Coalition, the communications here, the most relevant, the most timely, the most up-to-date for consumers, so that they, they know how to, you know, be able to get to the, to the businesses that they're, they're going to seek out. In addition, we're doing a business survey, which we'll be sending out probably by the end of this week to all the businesses within the corridor, and encouraging them to fill that out and let us know what their most immediate concerns are, their, and then their long-term concerns as well. So that again, and that'll become the basis for our strategic plan going forward. You heard about the block captain meetings, so in essence, every single block has the ability to raise their concerns and their issues to the block captain. The block captain then reports into the executive team, as well as myself, as the project manager, so that we, in essence, get, we're very much keeping a pulse on what's going on with the various businesses. So those are some of the ongoing efforts, but there'll be more, and we'll be, we'll be happy to report back on those as well. So you may be asking about how the Verona Road Business Coalition is being funded, and funding is important for us. I'll tell you what we have in place so far. The city of Fitchburg has put into their capital improvement plan from 2015 to 2019, they've pledged $130,000 to support this effort going forward. And the grant will cover, it's a grant, and it has to be matched by the Verona Road businesses. So they'll be pledging $25,000 a year, for each year, except for next year, where they'll be pledging $30,000, which will include some money for signage as well. So the coalition itself has to come up with a match from the businesses, and so we are, we're challenged with having to come up with $25,000 for that match through year-end of 2014, in essence. We have already received sponsorship from the- We have already received sponsorship from the Fitchburg Chamber, from several of the businesses and banks, Oak Bank, Wisconsin Bank and Trust, Quivvy's Grove. Hy-Vee has pledged a nice pledge as well and things, so the sponsorships are definitely coming in to help with this effort. But we, of course, would love to have Verona involved in helping to fund us as well, too. So in addition to that, we're doing fundraisers, we're, you know, trying to obtain the sponsorships, we're doing grants. We wrote the WEDC grant for planning for $50,000. We hope to hear on that by the end of the month. And then we're also doing the MG&E and Align Energy Grants as well, too. So we're going to try to get the money from various different avenues as well. Okay, and then finally, what are the next steps? Our next step today is really to try to engage Verona. We really believe that this... Truly, we are all in this together, and that Verona is an integral cog in this effort going forward. And we'll be a big benefactor when this road construction is done, and when, you know, when it's all in place. So we'd like to have Verona involved early, so that truly we could be proactive, we can work together and help the businesses, and, you know, the employers, the workforce, everybody involved in this effort going forward. Obviously, we're working on gaining that financial match. I talked about that $25,000 by year-end, and we're about halfway there, so we feel that we can... It's doable. We talked about the business survey going out and getting the feedback back from the businesses on their issues and concerns, and then that will be the foundation then for the Verona Road Action Plan, for the businesses, and the marketing plan going forward. And that input will be put into neighborhood strategic plans as well for the quarter. So that's what we're involved in at this point, and at this point, I guess we would open it up to questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Steiner.
Thank you, Cindy. Where's your home base, where you'll be working out of, contact points? Do you have a card that you'll leave us, those types of things?
My home base is three and a half miles west of Epic. I'm three and a half miles out of Verona, so that's where my home base is. But in essence, the coalition is all of us, in essence. But I'll leave you a card, and the contact information I will provide as well.
You misunderstood me. Is there a space that you're going to meet? So if I wanted to attend one of your meetings, where would that be?
Okay. We will be publishing the meetings and things, like we did with the rally, so that, in essence, we'll put you on the distribution list, and then the meetings will change venues. They will be meeting at various different offices throughout the quarter, if you will, and so you'll be invited to those meetings going forward.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Other questions in the council? Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cindy, you mentioned that you had met with the chamber director, and I was just wondering how you felt that meeting went, and if he had indicated whether or not he'd be bringing something before the chamber to discuss, you know, their participation, or how they would find a way to support.
Okay. I think it was an introductory meeting, and so we were doing a lot of educating about the coalition, if you will. I think that the information was well-received. They have already worked with us to disseminate our information. We've been communicating with Carl and the chamber office, and they've been actually putting it into their newsletter, and they did publicize our rally. We have been invited to come before the Economic Development Committee on this coming Wednesday at 7:30, and we will see what will happen from there. I think the... One thing I would ask for support on is that there seems to be room tax funding that... They seem to need projects to use that money for, and yet, our project doesn't seem like it fits the bill, according to the chamber executive director, and so I would ask for perhaps some input as to possibly how we could work together, because Fitchburg found a way to do that, so.
I'm sorry, can you draw... So the chamber...
Yep.
Sorry. Stay with us, Dave. So we... Just to be clear, and this is one thing I wanted to clarify, the Fitchburg Chamber gave us some seed money, and the city of Fitchburg, SEDA, which is their room tax, also gave us seed money. And so, trying to be a little bit... Not trying to be overly opportunistic, we recognize that there's hotel tax revenue here that might be a way to help support us at least getting off the ground this last quarter of the year. So that was just my clarification, that the chamber made a separate contribution, and then SEDA made a separate contribution. Thank you.
Other questions for... Or comments for Cindy? Cindy, one of the things that we could do is we can, on our website, we can put a link to your website, and if there's any other information that you want disseminated, you know, we can put that on our website as well.
Well, that'd be great.
So whatever you get to us, we'll do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you so much for being here this evening, and anytime if you think we need an update, let us know.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks so much. I have one other thing under the mayoral business this evening. We have two vacancies on committees. One is to the EDC, and that was because of the retirement of Mike Pettah. So to replace Mike Pettah, and this is a nomination that actually comes through the Chamber of Commerce, I would ask for your confirmation of the appointment of John Weiss. John is a vice president of business banking with Park Bank. The second vacancy that we want to fill is to the CDA, and I'm nominating Adam Frye. Adam is... Lives at 509 Military Rids Drive, and he is part of the Gold Leaf Development. And I would ask for your confirmation on those two appointments. So John Weiss to the VEDC, and Adam Frye to the CDA. Mr. McGilvery?
I would make a motion to approve confirmation of the individuals as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. All those in favor of confirmation of the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We will move on to additional reports. We'll begin with the administrative report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of updates this evening. First, wanted to mention a couple of city meetings that we have coming up this week. On this Wednesday, there'll be actually two meetings that'll be held. The first is at 6:30 PM. That's going to take place at the corner of Nine Mound Road and Cross Country Road, for the purpose of allowing members of the city council and the town board to physically view and inspect the section of Nine Mound Road that is going to be discussed for a transfer of authority from the town to the city. If anyone is not able to attend that meeting, I would just ask that people do have... Take the opportunity to view that stretch of road on their own, and when we hold the second meeting that evening, we'll be looking for confirmation that everyone has, either individually or as part of a group meeting, viewed the location. And then at 7:00 PM, there'll be a joint meeting of the city council and the Town of Verona Town Board that will be held at the Town Hall on Nine Mound Road. At that time, there'll be a formal public hearing on the transfer of regulatory authority for Nine Mound Road from the town to the city. And then, following that public hearing, both the town board and the city council would have available for action resolutions that would formally make that transfer. And that transfer is one of the pieces that's needed in order for the city to proceed with its planned reconstruction project for that roadway, which is planned as a 2015 expense as part of the TIF District Number Seven improvements. Also, that evening, at the joint meeting, there will be a presentation on the requested 2015 Fire Department budget from Fire Chief Joe Giver. And per the terms of the city's Agreement for Service for Fire Protection with the Town, it does provide that annually that the city would provide an opportunity to provide an explanation of the fire department budget, and give the town an opportunity to ask questions. So there would not be action on the budget at that evening, but it'll be an informational meeting and an opportunity to discuss any questions that come up as part of that contract or as part of the fire department budget. And then on Thursday, the 16th, at 7:00 PM, there will be another joint meeting for the Fitch-Rona EMS district, including the city of Fitchburg, city of Verona, and Town of Verona. That meeting will take place at Fitchburg Fire Station Number Two at 5145 King James Way. That is the annual meeting called for, for the intergovernmental agreement for Fitch-Rona, including an update on the operations of Fitch-Rona, as well as discussion on the Fitch-Rona EMS 2015 budget. And that is an item that would be available for potential action by the municipalities if there's quorums of the municipalities present at that meeting. And then, an additional meeting for the city of Verona, planned on Monday, the 20th, at 4:00 PM, the finance committee meeting... The finance committee will be meeting again to continue discussions on the 2015 budget. And then, there's potential that there may be an additional finance committee meeting following that, that has not been determined yet, and would be one of the items that would be finalized when we have that discussion on the 20th. We are planning on the 20th to present information on... Information such as Capital Projects Fund, TIF Districts, revenues, and starting to put preliminary recommendations for consideration by the finance committee. And then finally, last item for the update this evening, is the Dane County Executive has released his budget proposal, and County Executive Parisi had included in his budget a proposal to fund additional investment in the Danecom radio system, including additional towers and equipment that are intended to bring that system into something that provides additional coverage in higher-density buildings. Another proposal that has come from Dane County towards the end of last week was a proposal to take over administration of the 911 Center Board as a county authority for operating control of the 911 Center and the related emergency communication systems, and that the 911 Center Board would instead be formed as a technical advisory committee, but that would be in an advisory capacity. Dane County Cities and Villages Association did put an update out on both of these items. The one that came out today had more information on the Center Board proposal. So certainly, you can take a look at that and let me know if you have any questions. One item I wanted to highlight in there is that there will be a public hearing on the ordinance amendment for the changes in the Center Board structure. That hearing is going to take place tomorrow evening at 5:15 PM at the city council... City-county Building in Madison. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Yers, please.
I just kind of wanted to jump in a little on the EMS annual meeting. I'm just wondering if Verona... The city of Verona will be able to have a quorum there. I do know that the other two cities are planning on having a quorum, and we're also going to be discussing some pretty important things coming up with Fitch-Rona EMS, and it'd be really good information for all of you to hear, and so I hope we can have a quorum.
It was the next question I was going to ask, because I agree, it's always nice if we have a quorum at those meetings. Can we just have a show of hands of who is planning on being there Thursday evening? Okay. It appears we are not going to have a quorum. Neil, we'll carry the way.
About Wednesday, as well.
What about Wednesday? I plan to be there Wednesday. All right. Looks like we'll have a quorum on Wednesday. Well, on the Thursday evening, we'll do the best to get the information out to you, but it really is something that we should keep on our calendars from year to year, because it's... We always meet the same night. It's always the third Thursday of October is the annual meeting for EMS, and it is important for us to be there. We are a very big part of that, and as I indicate on a regular basis, that if each of our municipalities had to do what Fitch-Rona is doing as a district, it would cost us all a lot more money. So, Mr. Yers?
And, you know, one of the big reasons this annual meeting is maybe even more important than in years past is, you know, soon Fitch-Rona EMS is going to be taking on parts of the town of Madison, when the town of Madison dissolves, which is requiring Fitch-Rona to increase its staffing, which is going to affect our budget, as well as the other municipalities' budgets. And these changes are going to be coming sooner rather than later, and in a certain respect, we're not even sure when the town of Madison will dissolve. Some say 2017, others say it could be sooner. So if you can make it, please do.
Just so we clarify those dates, I think it's 2022 is the latest that they can be in existence, and we're hearing that it could be as early as 2017 that they may dissolve, but maybe earlier than 2022. Mr. McGilvery?
Yes, I was just wondering if maybe, Mr. Yers, you could take back to the EMS committee the potential to maybe change it from that third week in October, and put it onto an off week with when council meets. If you look at this week right now, that's four meetings we have this week, and for some of us with families, that is tough, and unfortunately, that's why I won't be able to be there. So if you could put it on an off week, it would certainly help, and maybe they could do that, accommodate, especially in budget time.
I know, according to the municipal agreement for the three municipalities, it spells out in there that it is the third Thursday, but by unanimous consent, we can do whatever we want, as long as we're not doing anything illegal. So we will certainly raise that point. Are there any other questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none, thank you, Bill, and we'll move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. Quite a few projects this evening. Update on Ascenic Ridge Phase Six. Project has been completed, except for the repair of one water service corporation stop. Building permits are being issued at this time. Cathedral Point, Phase Four. The north portion has been completed through the asphalt binder course, except for the installation of sanitary sewer in the easement across the Purple Cow property. As soon as that sanitary sewer has been installed and tested, building permits for the north portion can be released. South portion is completed through the curb and gutter. Sidewalks are being installed today, and the remaining crushed aggregate base course was also being installed. Asphalt binder course may be installed yet this week, but it's really dependent on the weather. With the rain we've had, I suspect that'll get pushed off till next week. All work should be completed in three weeks. Cathedral Point, Phase Three, and Cathedral Point, Locust Edition. The curb repairs in both these areas were made last week in preparation of asphalt surface course, paving later this week, and again, that's weather permitting. Scenic Ridge, Phase Five. Concrete sidewalk repairs have been made, and curb and gutter repairs are ongoing in preparation of asphalt surface paving. And again, that should be completed by the end of... Paving should be completed by the end of next week. Liberty Business Park, Phase One. The asphalt surface course was completed last week. Project is now ready for final payment and project closeout. Liberty Park, Phase Two. Sanitary sewer in Clarity Street has been completed. Contractors working on sanitary sewer on Laser Street. Soon as the sanitary sewer is completed, the contractor will start water main construction. Work on this phase of Liberty Business Park will continue well into November. Epic Water Main's... The water main extension to the Annex Two building is being completed this week. Other water mains extensions in and around campus far are on hold until the buildings are further along. And finally, Locust Drive Reconstruction. The sanitary sewer extension has been completed, and half of the water main extension is in. Contractor will follow the water main construction with storm sewer construction, and then finish the street grading, crushed aggregate base course placement, and curb and gutter installation. Its anticipated construction will continue to the end of November. That completes the report for this evening. If there are questions, I would try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Not seeing any. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to committee reports then, and first, we have reports from the planning commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For item 9A1, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-043, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use with drive-up window service known as Taco Bell at 671 Hometown Circle.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yers. Mr. Linder?
The proposed conditional use permit would allow Taco Bell to occupy 2,006 square feet of space at 671 Hometown Circle with drive-up window service. The restaurant would also have a patio on the east side of the building for outdoor seating. The planning commission held the required public hearing on October 6, 2014, and voted to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit. Some of the discussion items were the location of the dumpster, moving it away from the drive-up lane to parking spots a little bit farther to the north. Another item was the entrance to the drive-thru, trying to make it more of an angle as opposed to a 90-degree turn-in, and the last other major discussion was entrance to the Taco Bell facility, if we could do it from the east side of Hometown Circle. Decided that the engineer decided that was a... The city engineer decided that was a... Decided that, the engineer decided that was a, the city engineer decided that was a potentially possible backup issue onto Verona Avenue, so that was, that was not talked on, not talked on very long.
Are there questions or comments? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I'm just speaking in opposition to this. I think that there's a lot of traffic problems in the area, and I just don't think a drive, a drive-through window is going to help the situation, so I plan on voting against this.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, comments? Ms. Ricky?
I spoke with manager at Farm and Fleet, because there had been some questioning about employee parking for the employees of the businesses on Hometown Circle, other than Farm and Fleet, and this particular manager, James Whitechuck, said that he needed to talk to his manager, but that he, and he was going to get back to me today or tomorrow, so he has not called back yet, but that he thought shared parking would be a possibility to alleviate some of the street parking that's happening with either patrons or employees of those businesses. So, you know, I'm always in favor of shared parking, and so that sounds like it would be a possibility. I also asked him to specify how they would get the information out to the managers of those smaller establishments on Hometown Circle, so that they could inform their employees of where to park. And also, well, I'll come back to this later. I just wanted to give an update on that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Questions, comments? Just to clarify, one of the things that Mr. Linder indicated, and that was regarding the moving of the dumpster to an area where parking stalls currently existed, and the applicant agreed that he would replace those, I think it's two parking stalls, Jack, am I right, replace those two parking stalls in another area on the property, so it's not a reduction in parking of two stalls. Further, Ms. Ricky?
The other thing I just wanted to ask is, can parking be restricted on the south side of Hometown Circle, or is that not an option?
Mr. Gunlock?
I think it's up to your Public Safety Chief is gone, but it's, it's an item that your Public Safety Committee should take up. If you, if you want to restrict parking, you can. I mean, the street, I believe, is forty feet face-to-face. It is adequate width to have parking there. I know all the employees are parking out there, and it looks like it's parked full, but that's something for the Public Safety Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Gunlock. Other questions, comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-14-0493, approving a CUP to allow for an industrial-commercial entertainment land use with drive-up window service known as Taco Bell at six seventy-one Hometown Circle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Is that Mr. Diaz and Ms. Ricky? Okay. And the motion carries. Mr. Linder, is there anything else from the Plan Commission?
Uh, nope, that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the Finance Committee. Mr. McIlvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item nine B one, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Linder. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you. In the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, first being to AECOM for technical services for October, or excuse me, September, sixty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. The lion's share of that bill going towards the Nine Mound relocation project, another portion of it going to Liberty Business Park and the design of that interior road. Second being to Lion Energy for the electric bill payment, twenty-one thousand, sixty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. And finally, to Hammersley Stone Company for the Lincoln Street reconstruction project, that is ninety-seven thousand, thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery. Are there questions for the Finance Committee or for city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling four hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion carries. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item nine B two, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-044, authorizing an application for a state trust fund loan in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand for the purchase of the VACT theater facility.
We have a motion by Mr. McIlvery, is there a second? Second by Mr. Linder. Mr. McIlvery?
Thank you. From your administrator's memorandum this month, on August twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, the City Council did vote to authorize staff to initiate the process of applying for a state trust fund loan to finance the purchase of the building owned by the VACT located at four oh five Brew Street. The city will utilize this facility for public works and parks departments. The purchase cost for the building is three hundred and sixty thousand. The city also estimate that it will cost approximately twenty-six thousand to modify and equip the building for city use. Resolution R-14-044 authorizes the application of a state trust fund loan in the amount of the three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars with a ten-year term at the interest rate of three point five percent for this project. At the committee level, we did have discussion about the timing for application of this, considering the fact that the VACT is waiting to start construction of their new process, their new building until they have, I believe it's eighty percent of their funds raised. But in the interest of maintaining the three point five percent interest and also to initiate paying down the loan, the committee felt it was important to apply at this point so we could get the three point five percent, and staff, I believe, would also recommend that.
You've heard the explanation from Mr. McIlvery. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Yours?
If, if it does take a, are we going to need to have an agreement with the theater to stay in that building longer? Are we, I mean, I know we've, we've talked about some of these things, and we're all on the same page, but for legal documents, are we going to have to have anything for them to stay in their, in that building on Brew Street longer if need be?
Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, I would envision that there would be a purchase agreement and a lease agreement, and those would be separate documents that we would bring forward for approval by the council. This action applies for the state trust fund loan. We then would have, once that's finalized, up to four months to draw the funds, and then we can hold the funds until we're ready to disperse them and take ownership of the building. So, to answer your question, yes, there will be additional documents that will be coming for that process.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-14-044, authorizing an application for a state trust fund loan in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for purchase of the community theater facility. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion carries. Mr. McIlvery, is there anything else from Finance Committee?
The only thing I would add is that, I know Mr. Burns mentioned it, but on next Monday, we do have a Finance Committee meeting discussing the budgets and recommendations that will be coming out of that. So if, and if any of you are available to attend, or if there are people in the public who would like to attend, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Thank you, Mr. McIlvery.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention the time. It is four o'clock.
Four P.M., yes. Okay, we will move on to Public Works and Water Committee. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item nine C one, I would like to make a motion to approve change order number three for the Lincoln Street reconstruction and water main replacement project.
With a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIlvery. Mr. Touche?
Change order number three is a result of lots of discovery that was done on the Lincoln Street project after the street was excavate, excavated, excuse me. It was determined that more undercut was required, which is also, which also increased the amount of aggregate material required to bring excavation back to subgrade elevation. During construction, it was also determined that the pavement on the cul-de-sac for Holiday Court should be replaced, increasing, increasing the pavement quantities. Total cost of the change order number three is forty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents. With the previous change orders approved, bringing the total contract amount to nine hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-five and eighty-one cents. That would be it.
You have heard the explanation. Are there questions for the committee, for the city staff, for our engineer? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve change order number three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Thank you. Under item nine C two, I would like to make a motion to deny the claim for damages related to a sewer backup at three oh eight North Main Street filed by Amanda Marks and American Family Insurance. I'm going to ask, let the motion go first.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky? Mr. Touche?
Thank you. I want to ask Bill to fill in some background here, but just so know, just so you know, the committee did unanimously vote to deny this.
Thank you. Mr. Burns?
Yeah, just wanted to provide a little bit of background as it relates to all three of the claims that are on the agenda this evening. All of these claims are general liability claims. The city's insurance carrier is Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance, and the dollar amount of all of these claims is within the city's deductible. Therefore, it is the city council's decision and discretion to act on the claims, but we have gone through, our insurance carrier provided them with the claims and the facts of the claims, and asked for their recommendations on each one of these items. And in taking a look at that with our insurance company and with the city attorney, I just wanted to highlight that Wisconsin municipalities do have broad immunity to certain types of claims based in Wisconsin statutes that provide for immunity for acts that are done on a discretionary basis, and courts have interpreted that to include decisions related to adoption, design, implementation of public works and systems as discretionary acts. And essentially, what that means is that municipalities are held to a standard of reasonable care. If we are doing a reasonable job to inspect our infrastructure and facilities, and once we receive notice of a defect or a problem, that we respond appropriately with a, within a reasonable amount of time to correct that situation, that we are, there is immunity under Wisconsin statute for claim. And looking at this specific claim for the sewer backup for the Marks, the city did not have prior knowledge that there was a problem with the sewer main in this area. After going out and investigating it, we did not observe any conditions in the sanitary sewer pipe that, that we can point to and say that that was a defect that, that caused the backup. And once the city was notified of it, we did respond, we cleaned the pipe, we do now have that on a more frequent cleaning and inspection cycle. So the recommendation from the city's insurance carrier is that the claim be denied, finding that, that we are held to the standard of reasonable care, and that based on our actions in this circumstance, that we have met that standard of reasonable care.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a, a general statement about all these, you know, I, all these claims are kind of tough for me, because I'm not, I'm not an insurance expert, and I, but at the same time, it is, at the moment, the duty of public works to look at these things and to try to be as fair as possible. And right now, I'm basically just using the recommendations of staff and the insurance company as kind of my guidelines, and as long as they seem to make sense, that's, I'm going with their recommendations, just because, like I said, I don't, don't feel like I'm an expert on this, and I, I wouldn't want to expose the city to future liability or anything like that by making bad decisions or setting bad precedent now, so that's my justification, if anyone was wondering.
Mr. McIlvery?
I think to piggyback on what Mr. Diaz is saying, staff recommendation, as well as our insurance carrier, not to mention, legal counsel has recommended that these be denied under the statute that is, that legal counsel reviewed. I think it's important that the city, in moving forward, we have to apply the law uniformly, and in this case, that means a denial, because if, if you start making exceptions, it's very difficult to not make the exception the next time. So, I'm in agreement with Mr. Diaz. I'm not an, an expert on it, but I have, I feel like you have to follow the counsel that's been given to me.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Mr. Touche?
Thank you. Being the final member of Public, Public Works Committee, I'd just like to say that we discussed this quite a bit, and it wasn't, wasn't the easiest decision, and certainly not a fun one, but I think we've done our best to make the right decision.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will call the question. All those in favor of, let's see, this would be, it would be denial, denial of the claim for a sewer backup at three oh eight North Main Street filed by Amanda Marks and American Insurance. Is that, am I on the right one?
Yep.
I am, I am. That is the motion. Seeing no other questions, comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item nine C three, I would like a motion to deny the claim for damage to a vehicle from a tree branch filed by Kristen Knipple.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McIlvery. Mr. Touche?
Like before, I would ask Bill to fill in the information.
Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Yeah, a little bit of background on this claim. The claimant had a vehicle parked at one hundred South Marietta Street. A tree branch fell from a city-owned street tree, hitting the hood of the car, causing damage, and the claim is in the amount of five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents. Staff had responded, investigated the branch and the tree. Staff described the tree as in average condition, noting that there were a few dead branches high in the crown, all under three inches in diameter. The city was not aware, had not received any complaints of problems with this tree. Therefore, the recommendation is to deny the claim, citing that we did not have prior knowledge of the incident. We have maintained our, our trees in a reasonable manner throughout the city, and once we did receive notice through this claim that there was an issue with that tree, it was added to the pruning schedule, and pruning has subsequently been done on this tree.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Are there questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, the motion before you is to deny the claim for damages related to damage from a vehicle from a tree branch filed by Kristen Knipple. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Under item nine C four, I would like to make a motion to deny the claim for damage to a vehicle from a displaced water cap filed by Tim Hagan.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second? Second by Mr. McIlvery. Mr. Touche?
Again, I'll let Bill fill in.
Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Yeah, the circumstances of this claim, there was a, an individual that was driving a vehicle on South Main Street on August twenty-third of this year. That vehicle drove over a displaced water cap, which is a few-inch diameter metal disc that goes over a water valve box. That cap had become displaced, the tires went over it, causing damage to two tires, and the claim is in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This was investigated by staff, as well as a police report completed for the incident. Was found that the cap was displaced, it had an irregular edge on the bottom, there was no damage that was found to the valve box itself, and following the incident, staff did install a new cap and seal that cap in place with a mast stick in order to prevent that from becoming displaced again. Again, the recommendation, similar to the other claims, is to recommend denial, citing that we did not have prior knowledge that there was this displaced cap in that area. The city has many of these caps throughout the city, and we periodically inspect our streets, but did not have knowledge that this one had been displaced, and further, there was no evidence that there was damage to the valve box that, that would have caused that to become displaced, and the city responded appropriately following the incident to take corrective action, so the recommendation is to deny.
Again, you've heard the background on the motion. Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to deny the claim for damage to a vehicle from a displaced water cap filed by Tim Hagan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, anything else in Public Works and Water Committee?
The only thing I would like to add is, you know, if, I'd like to look at all, all three of these claims, if people see things that don't, that seem like they could be a hazard, to let the city be aware. I think you see trees with dead branches, you see any, anything, you know, within our, the city's property, let, let us know so we can make it right. That's our intention.
Thank you, Mr. Touche.
I have nothing else.
We will move then to Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Mr. Yours, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to deny an operator's license for Shannon Shrink.
We have a motion by Mr. Years, is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. On August twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, Police Chief Coughlin recommended the denial of operator-licensed applicant for Shannon Shrink pursuant to City of Verona ordinances, section seven dash two dash thirty-one. Parent 7-2-31, Pren B, Pren 2. In accordance with the City of Verona ordinances, the applicant had a right to appeal her decision. She did request a hearing, and that hearing was held tonight. However, Ms. Shrink did not attend, but we still went over the information, and the city has the right to deny for three reasons. One, for failure to disclose any convictions. Another is if you have a felony conviction, or three, if you have convictions that are closely related to the act of selling or distributing alcohol. And the committee believed that Ms. Shrink fell under each of the...all three of those provisions, and voted unanimously to recommend denial.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Thank you, Mr. Years. Questions or comments? You've heard the motion. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of recommending the denial or denying the operator's license application for Shannon Shrink signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years, please.
Thank you. Under 9D2, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-045, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Dane County for the installation, operation, and maintenance of warning sirens.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. Mr. Years?
Thank you. Dane County Emergency Management is planning to install two upgraded early warning sirens in the City of Verona. As part of the planning for these upgrades, DCEM worked with the City of Verona to identify suitable locations that would enhance the overall coverage of the warning sirens for the city. The new locations are the site of Well Number Four, 300 Cross Country Road, and Tulloson Park, near 656 and 644 Gatsby Glen Drive. The new sirens at these locations will replace older sirens with more limited range at Community Park and Vandergrift Park. The city attorney has prepared an intergovernmental agreement in the governing location, and maintenance of the warning sirens and DCEM has agreed to the language in the agreement.
You've heard the background on this motion. Are there questions or comments? Any questions or comments, Mr. Years?
I just want to make the comment. I know we've heard this a lot lately, but these warning sirens are not meant to wake you up. They're not meant in the middle of the night to get you to take cover. So they do not take the place of a weather radio or some other means of waking you up. Luckily, we...most of the people who were hit by the summer's tornado had other means. But just to remember and to remind, that these warning sirens are not to wake you up. They're not for people indoors. They're more for people outdoors to take cover.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-14-045, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Dane County for the installation, operation, and maintenance of warning sirens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years, please.
Thank you. Under 9D3, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-046, approving an intergovernmental agreement for operation of impaired driving task force.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Years?
These have been going on for a few years now. The Verona Police Department works with several other area departments, and they're meant to be very widely published in exactly what they say, an impairment driving task force. So, you know, you're checking for drunk driving, and the hope is you have no arrests or no ticketing, in that the prior putting it in the press and outreach that you deter people. That's the main purpose of these. And we've been doing them. They've been very successful for the city, and we're just re-upping our intergovernmental agreement for the next round.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Questions or comments? Mr. Touche?
Thank you. I'd like to add, we will be doing two events this year instead of one as we've done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-14-046, approving an intergovernmental agreement for operation of an impaired driving task force. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Years, anything else from Public Safety and Welfare?
Nothing further than that.
All right, thank you. Under new business this evening, we have discussion and possible action regarding Case Number 12CV1988, Apex Hawthorne Hills LLC and Apex Hometown Grove LLC versus the City of Verona regarding the refund of excess real estate taxes. And this is in Dane County Circuit Court. With us this evening, we have City Council, Legal Counsel, Ms. Amy Trumpke. But we will need to go into closed session, take action on this, and I would accept a motion.
So moved.
We need to have the motion read, please, if you would.
Pardon me. Common Council may convene in a closed session as authorized by Section 1985, Pren 1, Pren G of the Wisconsin statutes for the purposes of conferring with the City of Verona Legal Counsel who is running oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the city with respect to litigation in which it is involved. The Common Council may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
We do have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Schofield would read the roll, please.
Alderperson Years?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Linder?
Aye.
Alderperson McGilvery?
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
And Alderperson Touche?
Yes.
And the motion is...the roll call motion...vote is unanimous to go into closed session. We are back in open session. Are there any motions at this time? Mr. Years?
I'll make a motion to approve the settlement discussed in closed session for Case Number 12CV1988, Apex Hawthorne Hills LLC and Apex Hometown Grove LLC versus City of Verona regarding the refund of excessive real estate taxes pending in Dane County Circuit Court.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Linder. You've heard the motion. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we...we'll be right down here. Next on the agenda, we have approval of operator licenses. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
We have operator licenses from Terrence Hansen at the Fifth Quarter, Barbara Miller at Avanti's, and Jennifer Langle at Prairie Oaks Sitco.
You have heard the applicants. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. All those in favor of the approval of the operator's licenses signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are on to announcements. Do we have announcements this evening? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Verona Historical Society will meet this Wednesday, the 15th, at the Senior Center at 3:00 PM to continue our discussion of country schools in the area. The program will probably go for at least three more months if we can find or uncover people who will be willing to talk about these country schools, but it's been a very popular item, and we're even getting pictures in and adding them to our collection as the society looks for a place to display all this wonderful information. Also, the Verona Area Community Theater continues their production this week on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at the PAC at the School District. You need information, it's 845VACT, or if you go online, it's VACT.org. So that's this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Are there any other announcements this evening? Seeing no other announcements, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Mr. Years, second by Mr. Touche. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried.